Well, good evening. It's six o'clock and I will call as to order. We do have a quorum, so that's great. Our invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Omar Gonzalez. He is the pastor of Templo Senda de Luz Church here in Jacksonville. So Reverend Gonzalez, if you'll come to the podium, pray for us and then remain standing for our pledges.
Let's pray. Bendito padre, celestia, nos acercamos a tu presencia. Te damos muchas gracias por la oportunidad de poder estar aquí todos reunidos, señor. Yo te pido, señor, que tu espíritu santo, señor, venga y tome el lugar aquí, señor. Que ayude, señor, a cada uno en autoridad aquí, señor. Pedimos la bendición, señor, en este lugar. Te pido por cada uno de los que están aquí, que trabajan en este lugar. Señor, bendice sus familias, bendice sus hogares, padre santo. Yo te ruego que, señor, tú los cubras con un manto de protección en todo tiempo, señor. Y ruego, señor, como dice tu palabra, que horemos por ellos, aquellas personas que están en autoridad. Que tú les des gracia, que tú les des sabiduría para llevar a cabo, señor, el trabajo para la ciudad de Jacksonville. No solamente pedimos por la ciudad de Jacksonville, por el estado de Texas. Pedimos por los Estados Unidos, por el presidente de los Estados Unidos. Pedimos bendición sobre cada uno de ellos y te pido que tú dirijas toda esta junta que van a tener en este momento. En el nombre precioso de Jesucristo, te lo pido y te lo ruego. Amen.
Thank you very much. Now if you'll join me in the pledge of first of the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with Texas flag?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Our next item is special presentations. The first is business of the month presented by JEDCO President Shane Pace. So Mr. Shane?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I was going to ask one of the council members, Mr. Rob Goen, to come down.
I forgot I have my name.
That's okay. That's appropriate tonight.
Twenty-four seven.
Yes. So I would say, you know, Forrest Gump said it best, that Sadlers is definitely a household name here at Jacksonville. This, you've been around.
Where, Forrest Gump?
He said, you know, the shirt company. I said, you know, what's wrong with Sadlers? When I first came here, I was like, you have to go to Sadlers, you know? And so Sadlers is definitely a household name in Jacksonville and in East Texas. And so I just appreciate all that you do. You really kind of kickstarted downtown, you bought the old jail, and you turned it into the place that it is today. It's a gathering place for so many people. And you see that you have your apron on today, you work hard, you bring your wagyu wagon. And I just appreciate all you do for the community and just still glad that you guys are here one night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next is a presentation of a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association to our finance department. Mrs. Roxanne, if you'll come up. She and I are known as the Talents. Some people refer to us as bean counters, but I think we've got one of the best city finance officers that can be had. So we appreciate what you do. But this is the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting presented to the city of Jacksonville, Texas for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2022, signed by the executive director, Christopher Merrill.
I want to say that Donna took the lead on this audit and this report, so I just wanted to give her a shout out to my partner, Donna.
That's great. Yeah, thank you so much. Your partner has gotten this, just the fifth year?
This is six.
Six, okay, pardon me.
But it is hard to get.
That is. Thank you.
I think you're going to be going back down.
Yeah. Our next item is to discuss and consider with possible action accepting a donation of a portable building for the pub, for the public safety complex from Dyrus Portable Buildings.
Good. Yeah, Mayor, City Council, Wes and Chad recently went through the Citizens Police Academy. I think found great value in that program. And on the backside of that, if you will, they've offered to donate a portable building valued at approximately $10,000, brand new to the police department, to serve in their effort in protecting and storing things for the community, so.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to accept that donation.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from the Dyrus.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Tim McCray.
Second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That motion carries. If you guys will come, I've got a certificate of appreciation.
Of course.
How many tickets did this take off? How many tickets did this take off?
I haven't gotten a ticket in a while.
Okay. Two, okay, two, two.
But this is, the city of Jacksonville proudly presents this appreciation award to the Dyrus Premium Portable Buildings for their generous donation of a portable building to the city of Jacksonville Police Department. So we really do appreciate what you guys do for us.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear from anyone that wants to discuss or talk to the council about a concern that they have. We try to limit this, and please do so, to three minutes. This is not a dialogue. We can't respond. We just want to listen to whatever you want to talk to us about. So these are in no specific order, but the first one that was turned in was from Mike McEwen. So if you'll come to the podium, announce your name and your address, and then please limit it to three minutes, please.
My name is Mike McEwen. I'm the broker at Cherokee Road State. My business.
You can go ahead.
My business address is 807 South Jackson.
Perfect.
And also, I just wanted to say, after several days have gone by, my hearing has gotten better since the mayor sang at the Jingle Jingle. On a serious, on a serious note, I want you guys to know that downtown looks great because of all the work they did with all the sidewalks and everything. It really looks super. One suggestion I have, when you publish, make publications regarding zoning changes, is to, in addition to the legal description of the property, you put the address of the property. Because for most people, legal description is totally meaningless. And I know there's been a lot of conversation about the naming of the golf course, but I think somehow we still got to keep that name Jacksonville in there somehow. I've Googled Jackson and the one in Mississippi comes up. And when I Google Jacksonville, the one in Jacksonville, even there's one in Jacksonville four, but ours comes up there. And the last thing is, I think we really got to get a lot tougher about the trashy yards in town. We've got to have an ordinance that prohibits parking in yards. And I think we've got to get real tough and do some citations and even add more staff to the community relations operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Item number two is Raymond Franklin, or contestant number two.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes.
I'm coming up here to thank y'all for having, hearing ear about this PSA campaign. Thank y'all for considering it. Because I'm actually part of this Jacksonville. I'm a planning the zone committee. I'm on that. We have, of course, y'all know, we have had three murders this year. I got, I got my cousin back there. Her house, I guess the guys were shooting up and bullet done came through her house, you know, her roof. Those things, those things are going on. But I'm on the ground, I'm making phone calls to some of the people that is sitting in this room right now. And I got to let y'all know that the police, I am a part of the citizen police, so I get the opportunity to ride out and do those things. Been doing it for the last three years. So I do want y'all to understand that the police department and everybody that's listening to me are doing a great job. Steve and them are doing the great, Chief Williams is doing a great job. They are, they are a wonderful, wonderful group of guys. But I'm going to tell y'all just like, I'm going to tell the community and anybody that's listening to me. The chief doesn't know what's going on if he doesn't get those complaints written in and told about what's going on. So he's, his attitude or whatever he's got going on, or the police department got going on, they won't know what's going on unless it's written, guys, if it's written to them. And he can get on it right then, but until that, he just doesn't know what's going on in your lives, in your communities, or anything else. So if you're out jogging, or you're out potholes, or anything that's going on in Jacksonville, write it out. Talk to the committee right here. This is a council for a reason. But I want y'all to know, I am with the city of Jacksonville and I, and I make decisions too, and I pass along to these guys. But I get on the ground, they'll get on the ground, and they'll try to make things happen for us as a community if we keep in contact with each other, let each other know what's going on. I just want to say thank you. We had have a wonderful year, the time I've been with it, been here. But I just want to thank everybody for their, and their participation, their, their hearing ear and everything. And I want, I want to congratulate everybody for 2023. And let's have a great 2024 as a community and a whole. And I thank everybody. That's what I wanted to say.
Our next participant is Charles Flanders. If you'll come and give your name for the record, your address, and try to limit it to three minutes. Thank you.
All right, so my name is Charles Flanders. Address is 1018 County Road, 1511. I just wanted to thank you guys. Went into the library, saw you guys are doing some 3D printing stuff for the kids, which I think is really awesome. We need to continue to develop the skills in the community so that we can raise the average median income. It's pretty low right now. We got a lot of people that are on disability with few skills that could use more training in other areas. So that'd be cool to see more training through the library, that maybe we could do some sort of AutoCAD or something like that to help improve their skills. To comment on what he said about the yards, I do believe that having a clean yard is important. However, I think that there's a lot of overreach sometimes when it comes to laws and, and making people go out there and forcing them, either penalizing them by some ticket or something like that. I think that if you guys are going to consider that, that you need to look at all the options and weigh the pros and cons and really see what everyone else in the public has to say. I'm happy to see more people that are showing up because I believe that this is a really great community. The future looks like it's going to be kind of explosive growth here. You guys are doing a really good job with the businesses. I know taxes are kind of going up in certain areas because we're going to need more roads and stuff like that. So that's kind of why I'm really pushing to bring more skills, you know? Like I look at some of the Tyler community, they've got a facility for their kids at the school where they go and they teach them different trades and careers and different stuff like that. And I understand that we spent, you know, six, what is it, 15, 17 million on a football stadium, which is really good, but it's only going to help 2% of kids. So I think that some of that money would be better spent if we're looking at the whole as opposed to 1% or 2% of the student population. So if we can push more skills, that'd be awesome. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The next one is Steve Arrington. Is that correct?
Yes, my name is Steve Arrington. I stay at 300 Highland here at Jacksonville. My concern is early mornings when the kids are going to school and like people are coming from 1:35 to period swing, taking a little shortcut. It's 30 miles per hour down through there. We have ladies walking in the morning and it's the autobahn. If y'all want to meet y'all quota, just be there in the morning.
That's very good.
That's pretty much my concern.
Thank you. It's more worth streets right there with it, so. The drag strip.
Was there anyone else that wanted to speak to the council that didn't sign up? This now's your time. Did I see a hand? If you'll, name and address.
Cedric Franklin.
Okay.
At 907 Beacon. And my complaint is there's during the holidays and.
Any day.
Yeah, anytime, there's been just a lot of shooting and shooting up in there. And I'm the victim of getting one through my brand new roof on my house.
Good.
And, you know, it's been costly to me. But, you know, I'm just wondering if maybe there, especially on the holidays where there's fireworks and, you know, everything else. And we didn't even know the hole was in, in the house. Like it was shot twice. And my main complaint is, see, I have great kids and I, I would hate for, a bullet don't have eyes, so, you know? I'm just wondering if we may be on holidays and we can get a little more patrol or whatever. I know it's not legal to be shooting up in there with a gun, but it's real costly to, to, to me and my brand new roof.
Thank you very much.
And we thank the city for all that you do, trying to help keep us safe.
You bet. Thank you. I think, did I see one more hand or? Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you. All righty. We'll go to number, item number eight is our consent agenda. Items under our consent agenda require little or no deliberation by the council. So you see there, that's just a minute, we're appointing Richard Johnson to the access board. I'll entertain a motion to, on our consent agenda.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. We approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Tim McCray. Any discussion on those? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. That motion carries. Item number nine, we do not have any action out of executive session, so we will go to 10. Item number 10 is a second reading of a resolution in support of a Jacksonville Economic Development project involving an expenditure by JEDCO in excess of $10,000. So Shane Pace, if you'll take the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is the second reading of Resolution 12-2023-01. As you'll recall, we did, I reviewed this with you at your workshop last week. So just to kind of give you a little bit of background on where we are here today. Back in October of 2020, or October 10th of 2023, the city council did consider a resolution for the purchase of the building directly next door to Bell Finance, the pawn shop that we're looking at this evening. And so, kind of in partnership with that and thinking through kind of the big picture, JEDCO did pursue the purchase and acquisition of this building. We were able to get the building under contract for $150,000. We are currently offering a lease back to the tenant, Mr. Inright, who is operating the finance and pawn shop today for 36 months for $1 per year. The goal of that is to allow him to kind of finish out his time there at that facility prior to retirement. He may vacate the premises before that 36 months, but that was the term that he asked for. And then following that, JEDCO's goal would be to sell that building to a tenant that would benefit the overall downtown community. And we are currently set to close on December 22nd. This was reviewed by the JEDCO board on November 16th and unanimously approved. And Mr. Hubbard, if you don't mind, kind of toggling to the next slide. So what you'll see here is just kind of an overview of the plan for Hazel Tilton Park. On the top right of the screen there, you'll see a picture of what could be in the future for the downtown, the vacated area right there where you see parking on the screen, on the image there. There are a couple of different things we may do with that, but the solid red box is the Inright building that I just mentioned. The dashed red box is the building that we're looking at this evening. And again, with all of the improvements that are currently planned for Hazel Tilton Park, which include a stage, restroom facilities, and using that more for a community gathering space. It made sense to try to acquire those buildings while they were available and then utilize those to bring in sales tax generating businesses and businesses that will protect the investment that's currently been made. So with that, I will answer any questions before I read the resolution caption.
The, okay, the Bell Pawn Shop building, the building attached to it.
Yes, sir.
Have we already purchased it?
We have, yes, sir.
Okay, that's what, that's what I thought.
That's correct.
And so this is a secondary purchase.
Correct.
We being JEDCO.
We being JEDCO, that's correct.
Right.
Okay.
With, again, the goal that we are marketing that building and attempting to sell it.
In line with our goals and the JEDCO city, our people's values.
For the downtown revitalization, that's correct. Yes, sir. Okay. All right, so I will read the caption. This is a resolution of the city council of the city of Jacksonville, Texas, purging projects of the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation that may include land, buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure and improvements found by the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors to promote new or expanded business development within the city of Jacksonville, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you. So we own three blocks on that block.
Two buildings, yeah, correct. JEDCO will own the two buildings and the city will own the, what's shown as parking here, which we're going to use as a flex space.
Beautiful. All right, item B of that is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution in support of that economic development incentive. So I'll entertain a motion there.
Mayor, I propose a motion to approve the resolution as read by JEDCO president in support of the economic development incentives.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gillen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 11 is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance modifying sanitation rates. Mr. James.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, in October of 2022, so last year, the council approved a new contract with the public services, which combined our existing residential and commercial contracts into one contract with a termination date of December 31st, 2030. Annually built into that contract is a 3% CPI increase, and we implement those on a calendar year basis. We're able to negotiate that down from their standard. They like to see higher than 3%. 3% is actually lagging inflation now, so I think we did okay this year. You'll see that our current rates for single, our residents served by a single card is $23.19 per month. That will be going to $23.89 or a net impact of a 70 cent per month increase, less than 10 cents per pickup. Generally, at twice a week pickup, you're getting about eight pickups per month, so a little less than 10 cents per pickup. I did include there as well, subject, or I guess, after adoption of this new contract, we did roll out the yard waste pickup program. So on the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month, that's year round, we'll pick up to 10 bags of yard waste from any residents, subject to them calling the schedule or emailing bulky@jacksonvilletx.org.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we modify. Are we, is this a new ordinance?
It is an ordinance.
I make a motion that we modify the sanitation rates.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Tim McCray. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 12, discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance modifying water and wastewater rates. Mr. James.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, on Thursday at the workshop, we had Chris Eckert of New Gen Strategies and Solutions present what I think was a really great overview of our responsibility as a city managing our water and wastewater infrastructure for not only who's here now, but who's to come to Jacksonville with the growth that's already been mentioned this evening. And so in light of that, it's inevitable that costs are going up to operate the business and that there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to either be replaced or maintained or, or new infrastructure just constructed. So in light of that, we are considering water and wastewater rates. And we did this last year, and in a perfect world, we look at this on an annual basis to make sure we don't have what would be considered rate shock, where you don't adopt changes for a few years and then you have a larger impact. So incremental changes are easier to budget for and for households to accommodate. Taking a look at this, Chris reminded the council that this does operate independently in what's called a enterprise fund, separate and apart from property tax, property taxes, and that revenue sufficiency and reserves and reinvestment in the system are all paramount to its success and us being able to provide water to not only our residents, but all the water cups that purchase water from our system. So here is a look at financial performance with the current rates. This is assuming we keep the current rates, we forego any increases, and we just continue adding to the future. And you see very quickly, the revenues line there, the purple line on the slide on the left, is overcome by expenses, meaning we're dipping into fund reserves, and that's not a good place to be for the water, water system. Again, this is just a look at water. And then on our debt service coverage ratio, you see that we can't meet that as we want to plan for. On the wastewater side, we're a little more behind the curve, if you will, on the sanitary sewer system side, based on some of the known improvements we need to make to that system, namely, an improvement of around $12 million to the sanitary sewer plant located down 204 and referred to as the Double Creek Sanitary Sewer Plant or Wastewater Treatment Plant. You see here that revenues are already surpassed by expenses and we need to take steps toward overcoming that through rates, but also through aggressive pursuit of grants and other federal and state dollars to mitigate some of these costs. And you see there that we're lagging our debt service coverage ratio. So in light of those two slides, this is the information that Chris provided, that we're looking to have a cash on hand goal of 90 days in the utility fund and a debt service coverage ratio of 1.1, and that each utility, meaning the water and the sewer utility, fund themselves so that the rates are appropriately proportioned and set, that sewer pays for sewer and water pays for water and that even though they're in one fund, the enterprise fund, that they don't co-mingle. So here was the recommendation on the rates. This is a snapshot of residential inside proposed rates. Almost every home, or the vast majority of homes inside the city limits of Jacksonville are served by a 3/4 inch meter. You see that the base charge for the 3/4 inch meter would be moving from $13.76 to $14.08, so just over a quarter there. And your volumetric charge, which is based on your usage, it's tiered. That's necessary for certain grants and things and to promote a water conservation. You see, the more water you use, the more you start to pay for that water. That's also good for our low income and, you know, things like that. You see that that 0 to 200 threshold is going up 5 cents. The 2,000 to 10,000 is going up roughly 7 cents. Most of our homes are using about 6,000 gallons of water per month. And we will take a look at the customer impact here in a moment. On the commercial side, again, for inside the city limits, I'm getting some glare there, but we're looking at moving, you know, most, most commercial entities are served by a larger meter. It would be hard to know exactly which one to classify here, but we'll take a look at the impact by use here in a moment. But these would be the changes, both to the volumetric and the base rate charges for our commercial customers. So here's your impact for an average household inside the city of Jacksonville that utilizes 2,000 gallons of water and wastewater. This is what we would consider a pretty low volume user, likely one or two occupants in a household that, you know, just generally bathe and do some cooking, but probably not watering lawns and things of that nature. Their average bill would go from $40.87 to $45.30 on a monthly basis. And you do see that the larger portion of that increase is related to the sewer. Again, I previously mentioned that our sewer infrastructure is in greater need of reinvestment than is our water system at this time. Most homes, as I mentioned, use 6,000 gallons of water or closer to 6,000 than 2,000, so they're hitting both the 0 to 2 and then that 2 to 10,000 tier in their water usage on the volumetric side. They would realize an increase of 64.75 to 71.78. You see how we're positioned with the other towns. One thing that Chris rightfully cautioned us to realize is that all these different communities have, have invested and reinvested in their infrastructure at different times. Some use more surface water than the city, some have more wells than our city. So it's really unfair, although we want to know how we stack up with other communities. It's not really an apples to apples correlation. Here's your average commercial bill impact for a commercial entity that uses 10,000 gallons of water and wastewater on a monthly basis from 119 to 133. And then on a thirty thousand gallon user, this is probably an industrial user, they're using some kind of water in their process, going from two eighty-five thirty-seven to three seventeen. So on a percentage basis, from the both, the, both residential customer examples, as well as both commercial customer examples, you have roughly the same percentage. Any questions there?
James, I do have a quick question. So on the water co-ops that purchase water from us. If we adjust our rates, does that impact them, or are those contracts negotiated on a per-coop basis?
They are negotiated on a per-coop basis.
Yep.
And we just went through all the, what, two years ago? Three? I mean, been, in the cl- recent past.
They're, they're all under contract.
They're all under contract, but they, um, and we've reviewed all those rates.
Okay.
And that's raw water, not treated water, too.
It would be, it would be treated water to the co-ops.
Was it treated?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
But, I mean, that's, but we, we've recently done a study of all those charges and because several of their co- several of their contracts were expiring.
Okay, so the rates that they got are not necessarily lagging behind. We feel comfortable that their rates were with these kind of increases in mind.
Yeah, we'll take a look at those, uh, separate and apart from the New Gen Strategies report, but certainly, yeah.
But that's, that's not particularly old data. It's relatively current on those water co-ops.
I will say, too, we believe, we actually have a meeting tomorrow with, uh, some entities that we believe are going to be in receipt of a, a nice forgivable, uh, loan, uh, to help enhance our water, our wastewater treatment plant, excuse me. That's the largest driver on the rates on the sanitary sewer side of the equation. It's about a twelve million dollar project. We, we believe we're going to get fifty-plus percent loan forgiveness on that, which would help us, you know, take a look at rates in the future, but we don't want to count those, uh, eggs before they hatch, so it's deep. We want to, we want to do it, we need to, to sustain the system, and if we're in receipt of that, we should know probably within the next couple of months, uh, that helps us moving into next year.
Okay. All entertain a motion on that ordinance.
Mayor, I make a motion that we, um, modify the water and wastewater rates.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Latitia Horace.
All second.
Second by Councilwoman, uh, Rob Goen. Any other questions, discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number thirteen is to discuss and consider with possible action the purchase of a budgeted dump truck.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, in October of twenty twenty-two through early twenty twenty-three, the city sold three dump trucks that had really surpassed their service life. We are recommending as budgeted the purchase of a new seven to eight yard dump truck on a chassis. It's, uh, through the Houston Gallison Area Council Purchasing Co-op. It actually came in under budget. It was budgeted at a hundred and sixty thousand and came in at one twenty-eight three sixty. I believe we would expect delivery of this first quarter, kind of the latter half of the first quarter twenty twenty-four.
Okay. All entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we purchase the new dump truck.
Have a motion with Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray. Any discussion on the dump truck?
Glad it's coming in under budget.
That's right. Yeah, I think Randall said the three that we sold, we just run them in the ground. They had. There you go.
And Latitia, if, at any point in time that when this machine comes in, Phil, let's go drive it.
Oh, we can take it for a ride.
I did the new fire truck one time. That was fun, until I took it off-road and they got mad at me.
I, I don't know that we're supposed to be announcing that wrong.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number fourteen is to discuss and consider with possible action authorizing the purchase of new aerators for the Double Creek Wa- wastewater treatment.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, you have pictured here the exact units we'd be looking to purchase. These two came in under budget by almost twenty thousand dollars for the purchase and replacement of two floating brush aerators at Double Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is the city's wastewater treatment plant. There's only one of them, as opposed to having a surface water treatment plant and five wells. This is where everything we flush goes, and, uh, these are incredibly important to make sure that lovingly the bugs, as they're referred to, stay alive to continue to process, uh, waste, making it suitable, um, basically to go back in the creek system. There's more than just, more than just bugs, but, uh, that, these are critical to keep the water, the water doing what it needs to do. So we have a four-year plan to replace all these systematically. However, what we'll keep a close eye on is this grant that we, we think we're going to receive, and just the redevelopment of the plant in total. We may not have to get through the whole four-year plan, but it's crucial that we go ahead and take steps toward that now.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion on the, uh, area.
I'll make a motion that we purchase the floating brush aerators, uh, two of them for the, uh, Double Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant for sixty-eight thousand four hundred dollars.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any, uh, questions, discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider with possible action approving the purchase of a new package lift station for the replacement of the current Tremont Lift Station.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council, this relates to the sanitary sewer system as well. Lift stations generally, um, the wastewater treatment system runs off of gravity as opposed to pressure on the water side, and so where you have terrain that makes it very challenging to have that happen, you have what's called a lift station, basically works almost like a dam. It pumps the fluid up to a higher level to then get on a different plane to keep working its way downhill and toward our plant. Again, we only have one plant, and it's at kind of the south or the east side of town, so everything we flush has to get all the way over there, and we know we have a lot of terrain in east Texas. Uh, this is for the replacement of a twenty-five-plus-year-old packaged lift station, uh, budgeted at seventy-seven thousand, and via a buy board contract came in at just under sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay. All entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we purchase a new package lift station for the replacement of the current Tremont Lift Station.
I have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray. Any discussion needed on that one? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
We've saved a hundred thousand dollars tonight.
We have. Right. Item number sixteen, consider, uh, discuss and consider with possible action modifications to a Schaumburg and Polk Engineering Service Contract for the Canada Street renovation project.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, several months ago, the council did authorize a professional services agreement with Tyler-based, uh, Schaumburg and Polk. That contract was for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for design, engineering, and construction observation services for the reconstruction of the section of Canada Street, lying west of seventy-nine and east of South Bolton Street. Uh, we are amending or seeking, uh, approval to amend that contract, uh, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand being to replace the water line on that section of roadway, and then additional three thousand dollars of surveying east of the sixty-nine at Canada intersection, closest to CBS. We need that survey data to make some educated decisions and work with Tech Stop on the possibility of making some mobility enhancements, meaning lane increases, uh, and traffic movement changes at that intersection. So, eh, I think it's a small price to pay for the information we're going to gain from that, to have educated conversations with Tech Stop. Reminding you, this section of roadway would be concrete, looking to, uh, modestly widen it from its current about twenty-four feet to around twenty-eight feet curb back to curb back, looking also to add a continuous sidewalk of varying widths on the south side of the roadway, and it would require some utility relocates. We do have overhead utilities and potentially some subsurface utilities that would need to be relocated as well. It also includes the new sewer line under this section of roadway, too. So it's, it's almost what would be referred to as a complete street project. We're essentially replacing everything in this area and coming back also with a pedestrian mobility improvement. Uh, a key factor to remember is that on the west side of the project, we're looking to make that intersection with South Bolton, uh, into a ninety-degree, uh, intercept angle. Currently, it's at, I don't know what you call that, about forty-five degrees. It's, it's rel- relatively dangerous to get to that intersection. We get a lot of cross east-west traffic there between schools and sports complexes and things, so we'll make a ninety-degree, uh, intercept angle with South Bolton. This is also paramount to response time and access for larger fire apparatus. Currently, if they need to get on the east side of town from the central fire station, it really is best for them to go to Tina Street. Uh, it's very difficult to turn out a nine-one-one South Bolton and northbound, and then attempt to try to make that turn on to Canada Street, next to impossible, especially during peak traffic times. Um, so this will provide some relief, um, for response time as well. We're starting to see a lot more traffic on Canada Street with the access point to Super One, and, um, you know, I think in the, we haven't budgeted for it yet, but I think in the not-too-distant future, we'll start to talk about Tina Street and all the east-westbound traffic that it, uh, that it, uh.
Okay.
Incurs.
All entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion when, uh, approve the modifications to the Schaumburg and Polk Engineering Services Contract for the Canada Street renovations project.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellert.
Second.
Second by, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item seventeen is to discuss and consider with possible action an interlocal agreement between the City of Jacksonville and the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation for demolition, demolition services, uh, for the former Bonner Place Nursing Home located at four twenty-one South Bonner Street.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this interlocal agreement is just kind of a fancy way to say that we're in partnership with JEDCO on this project. Uh, we've also, we're also in partnership, albeit not with the interlocal agreement, with the current property owner, who has, uh, already abated the asbestos and is going to be turning the keys over, so to speak, uh, to the property of about one point three acres to JEDCO. We plan to partner with them in the demolition of this structure and then to see the property redeveloped, most likely, uh, to be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood into single-family development. We're not exactly sure how it'll replat, but we think we'll get somewhere in the neighborhood of four to six, uh, single-family residential lots running that section of South Bolton Street. Here's some pictures of the, uh, state of the structure. It's, it's really beyond, um, reinvestment, and I hate to say that. I mean, a lot of the JEDCO's effort in the last couple of years has been to help businesses that want to reinvest in structures overcome those hurdles, but when you're talking about new codes that have been implemented, uh, post the construction of this, electrical, uh, wires that have been stripped and things of that nature, um, it'd just be very, very costly to see reinvestment in this property. I know I've talked, um, and so has Shane, with several of the adjacent property owners, they're certainly in support of the project, as opposed to having what's been about, uh, a vacant structure for somewhere in the neighborhood of six to ten years, not exactly certain the date of, uh, vacancy. The owner, um, does currently operate the legacy nursing home on the east side of Jacksonville, um, east of the loop. So the breakdown, uh, related to the ILA is that the city will incur sixty-five thousand dollars of, uh, costs toward the removal of the structure. It's approximately one-third of what we budgeted in ARPA funds, uh, for demolition, uh, moving forward. JEDCO will be responsible for securing the contractor, having the building removed, and then, uh, after completion of the project, we'll reimburse JEDCO sixty-five thousand dollars from the ARPA funds.
Okay. All entertain a, uh, motion? I, I can answer it afterwards, if that's okay. Would that be correct, Brett?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get with you afterwards. All entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we, um, proceed with the action on, what are we doing here?
Interlokal.
That we're, that we enter into an interlocal agreement between the City of Jacksonville and the Economic Development Corporation for the demolition services of this Bonner Place.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion?
I do have a quick question, and James, you may have mentioned this. I'm sorry if I missed it. When are we expecting demolition to commence?
The demolition contractors indicated that they have availability in kind of mid-January. Um, what we're gonna, what the potential holdup on that would be is removal of potentially any natural gas services to the structure, uh, by Center Point, as well as overhead electrical infrastructure by Encore, waiting on their timeline on removing that for us to make it safe for the demolition contractor.
Okay.
I would certainly expect to see demolition by first, uh, cor- first quarter of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Hopefully, uh, very early twenty twenty-four.
And it doesn't take long to bring a building like this down, right? It's not going to be something that lingers for weeks or?
It, it's probably a couple-week project, but it, it won't be, you know, there'll be active progress toward it on, I would say, generally a daily basis. That's why we wanted to professionally contract it out, plus the magnitude of the structure being three stories on the backside necessitates a professional contractor.
Okay. And I know your slide mentions it up there, that asbestos abatement had, was expected to commence in October, but that has actually been completed, correct?
It has been completed, that's correct.
There's a certificate that shows it. Okay.
Yes.
Great. That's all the questions I have.
Okay.
And there's, I mean, in, in my mind, I made that motion, there is no economically viable reason for that, for us to do this, but it's necessary.
Was that, was that the old hotel we got a special use permit? Is that what they, or redo it?
No, no, but I mean, it, it does not make financial sense for us, for any of us to have that kind of money, but it is so necessary for that neighborhood, and, you know, we've been pushing for new homes and new development and things like that, and you have a building like that that is doing nothing but bringing down property values, and I'll buy into the ten-year plan for, I'll buy into the ten-year plan on that neighborhood, so.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eighteen, open forum for mayor and council.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
I know you wanted to say.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Um, I do want to read some comments that I had written, um, prior to tonight, so if you all, uh, bear with me. Um, so tonight, we heard during our citizen participation segment of our meeting, several residents concerned about the occurrence of random gunfire. Um, these are shots being fired inside city limits, particularly on the north end of town. Uh, I invited these residents, our neighbors, to the meeting tonight specifically to address this issue because it's an area of great concern to many of us. It became an even greater concern when I learned that not long ago, one of my neighbors, who you heard from tonight, discovered that a bullet had penetrated the roof of their home. As was mentioned, this bullet didn't come from the homeowner's gun. Um, in fact, they don't know where it came from, but what they do know is that they're blessed. They're blessed that that stray bullet that presumably fell from the sky only hit their roof and not one of them or one of their grandchildren. But this neighbor isn't the only one that has been affected by random gunfire. You've heard others tonight express their experiences, that this type of behavior has, has caused the stress and the anxiety that it's caused, and you've heard us say that tonight enough is enough. This isn't funny, it isn't cute, and it's not cool. So whoever is doing it needs to stop before someone is hurt or worse yet killed. So what are we prepared to do about it? For starters, we've asked the city staff to develop, and we've worked with the staff, to develop a PSA campaign aimed at bringing awareness to this issue. I want to thank the city staff for coming alongside us and helping us address this matter. So far, we've released a, a PSA video on the city's Facebook page, and a press release and editorial are soon to follow. We are also looking at other ways to get the word out while continuing to be vigilant around this matter. The message is clear. Discharging a firearm inside city limits is dangerous and illegal, and if you're caught, charges can and will be filed. And if you're caught, charges can and will be filed. We know it won't be easy to catch the offenders, but with J P D's help and the vigilance of the community, we're confident that we will, eh, we, that we will be able to drastically mitigate the ongoing occurrence of this behavior. Now, I fully realize that the ones that need to hear this message are likely not the ones listening and are certainly not the ones here tonight. But I am hopeful. I'm hopeful that those of you that are here will also help spread the word. And if you see something, please say something. Call, report it, make your voice heard. If you know someone that is engaging in this behavior, tell them to cut it out. We are tired of feeling like prisoners in our own homes and in our own neighborhoods. We are better than this, we deserve better than this, and we are demanding better than this. Thank you.
What about you?
I'd just like to commend the city and, and Christus Mother Francis on that jingle jog this weekend. That was a, that was a, the largest turnout I've ever seen, and it was really well done. And any, anybody that was there, I think, had a really good time, so.
Yeah, it was.
Good job.
I'll serve margaritas in my front yard next year. Donuts and margaritas at nine-thirty, perfect. Can I, can I say something to the gentleman back here? I mean, it's, I mean, I just, I just want to say that, I mean, you had mentioned the tomato bowl and the fifteen million dollars. In that same bond package that we, that we passed at that same time, we did fund a brand-new C T E center at the high school. We being the school district.
That was the ISD.
That would be the school district, yeah, so I mean, that's, that's a school district. Under a million? I don't, I'm only thinking three to five million. But we, but we did fund a whole um, the whole C T E program and um. But then, but then I think you're missing the, you know, the soccer. I think this is the first year we're really and truly, we're lined up with an all-state soccer team. And so that's, I mean, that's not football, we've got soccer, we've got bands, we've got cheerleading.
But Rob, that isn't even our issue.
I know, I know.
That's the Jacksonville Independent School District.
I know, but I just wanted to.
We didn't pass that.
No, but I mean, as a city, it's part of our, it's part of everything. We, I voted for it, absolutely, I did. But I just didn't want, I didn't want, I didn't want you leaving here without saying that, that we have, and yes, there are great things going on in our library, but from the school district standpoint, we are addressing, I mean, they're doing a better job with their programs too. And I, I work with these kids every day, I see these kids every day, and um, they are, they are making progress in those, in those areas. But like, you know, all of us up here, we're city people, and that's the school district, that, that's a Monday night. When, when they, I mean, the next school board meeting's Monday night at six o'clock next week, so.
I tried to go down a couple, they kind of shut you out of being a good.
Well, and that's what, and that's why I'm, that's why I'm addressing you, because I'm not going to shut you out. And um, I respect, I respect. No, I don't, I, I mean, my opinion, and discussing this with you right now, is purely mine and none of them or none of the city, but, but they all have um, done that.
I was gonna say, okay, um, it is a city issue because work hardening is, is a big problem for people who are disabled. And so at, you know, whenever you talk about disability, a part of that has to do with trying to give people skills to be able to overcome whatever disability they're having. And so I was really looking forward to seeing you do that. We could really start pushing towards having a work hardening program here in town.
I'm, I'm a work.
I'm just looking at, if you look at the future, costs are going to go up for everybody. Expenses are going to go up, taxes are going to go up. The median income here is now falling, and you guys are bringing in businesses, which are great. But number one, are you having like an integration with these businesses and helping them understand, hey?
Jed, Jedco constantly works with these businesses, they've had welding programs and all kinds of training uh, programs. It's mostly through the Economic Development Corporation.
I, I want to remind everybody at this point, this is, this is not a public hearing time.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, listen, let's, let's move on to the city manager's report as we take up our discussion.
We'll meet in the back corner.
Yeah, go ahead, James.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem McGray, I thought the jingle jog was excellent as well. I know several of our council members participated, great cross-section of the community. I thought it was a fun route, starting and ending downtown. Uh, thanks to J P D for all the traffic control and making us feel safe on the course and crossing even Highway seventy-nine. Also, huge shout-out to our police department, they'll be formally recognized in January, they're waiting on the trophy. I think Chief wants the hardware here, uh, when he's before you. But they did take first in uh, in their class for the, this year's, or, yeah, the twenty twenty-three National Night Out. Uh, you, if you've been through Buckner Park lately, you saw uh, demolition of the former playground roughly a week ago. And over the weekend, crews were working to install the new playground. Anticipate completion of that project uh, right as we turn the chapter into twenty twenty-four. Uh, the parade, I want to just thank everybody who had a role in the parade. Again, it's, it just doesn't get better than the Jacksonville, Texas Christmas Parade, it's a phenomenal event. Want to thank the chamber, I did take those pictures from a link that they had to uh, B and L Services Photography, so give her credit. Uh, but really, this, this would not be possible without countless volunteers. Um, there on the left-hand side of the screen, you see just one, but I believe the police department hosted a volunteer coordination meeting, had over forty-five volunteers show up to get lined out in terms of what intersections they were helping and kind of what their role was. And so just a fantastic event, weather couldn't have been better. Road construction, we've been talking about road construction for a while while it's here. Uh, we anticipate the contractor for the road reconstruction projects listed on the screen to mobilize tomorrow. You'll likely start to see some construction equipment near the water well on Bailey Lane. We have yet to get the full details on exactly how they plan to progress through the project. We've asked them not to do any milling or surface removal until the turn of the year. We want to do our best not to disrupt hollow uh, holiday travel plans and holiday gatherings. Um, but we will start to see probably some targeted um, improvements along these streets as they get ready to do milling and then repaving. But we'll start to see some concrete pores, uh, culvert replacements and things of, of that nature. They did receive their notice to proceed today, and they plan to start tomorrow. We had a pre-construction meeting with them last week, and it's about a two-hundred calendar day contract, which takes them to summer of twenty twenty-four for completion. On the heels of this, just next uh, council meeting, we'll see a crack ceiling uh, contract for council consideration. And then in spring of twenty twenty-four, when the weather warms up and we have the uh, suitable temperatures for some surface treatments, uh, we have quite a few roads to start receiving these surface uh, surface level treatments. So um, these, these are going to be of inconvenience, if these are roads you travel. We're going to do our best to utilize some targeted text message type um, notifications, uh, Facebook page, website, things of that nature. But um, certainly there'll be days where residents who live along these sections of roadway uh, will be inconvenienced, but the, the long-term fruit of having the road fully reconstructed will certainly outlast that. And then uh, just tagging along to Councilwoman Horace's comments, we have made some Facebook posts, uh, but beyond that, I, 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 I can't say it better than you did. Um, but we have one PSA video that's already been released, I think we have another that'll be in Spanish to be released soon. We do certainly see an uptick to random gunfire around holidays and sometimes even kind of camouflaged by the sound of fireworks. But we want to say that uh, enough's enough and um, we want better for, for Jacksonville and for everyone who lives here. That's all I have.
Very good.
With no, nothing else, we'll adjourn at six fifty-six. Thanks for coming.